Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the county council meeting taking place on Wednesday the twenty sixth of June two thousand and twenty four. This meeting is being broadcast broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones? And all other electronic devices. Members, as always, can I ask and remind everyone that we are respectful to each other during the meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during the debate. I would also remind members that it is not appropriate to shout out at other councillors across the floor during debate. Please use your microphones when speaking. Where points of order are raised once a ruling has been made on advice of the deputy monitoring officer? Who is deputising for the director of legal and democratic services today, it will not be revisited. Thank you. Colleagues, over the course of the last month, I have attended a number of flag raising events to coincide with Armed Forces Day. On June the sixth, I attended the beacon lighting event in Durham City. When we came together to remember the soldiers who stormed the beaches of Normandy on June the sixth nineteen forty four. During the Second World War and lit the beacon to honour the memory of those brave troops who took part in the operation that provided pivotal for the allied forces. I was delighted to attend some official openings throughout June, including the new office accommodation at Courton House at Akeley Heads and the story at Mount Oswald. Ladies and gentlemen, this last weekend, I was invited to Thornley School. I'd like to thank Lucy and Jake and Chris. It was an absolutely wonderful experience. The children had created a new banner which they will take to the gala. During the event, these children presented Chris with a with a gift. She's done an amazing amount of work with these young people. And I just wanted to read what they had written in this thank you card. You gave us your time, you gave us your praise, you helped us and you taught us in so many ways. The effort you've gave, the lessons you've shared, you guided us and gave us a voice to be heard. We thank you so much for your wisdom and time, we thank you for giving us the tools to shine. Can I just say, for a group to present that to a councillor was moving, absolutely moving. And it is the epitome of what we should be as councillors. So can I say thank you to the three councillors who were there, thank you so much for inviting me and to Chris, thank you so much. Sorry, I was so keen to get this thank you out, I missed a sheet out. But I have to say, that was far more important. So we move on to item one, the minutes, can I have a mover?
Chair, can I move the minutes please?
And a second.
Second the minutes, Chair.
Thank you. So are the the minutes of of the meeting for the twenty second of May two thousand and twenty four agreed? Thank you. Item two declarations of interest, does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? Thank you. So I've already given you the next page. So we move on to item four, the leader's report, can I invite the leader of the council to present her report?
Thank you, Chair, and how can I follow that again, congratulations councillor Varty on an excellent job, thank you. So good morning, everyone, earlier this month, the story, our new cultural heritage and registration venue opened at Mount Oswald. This was a milestone moment in an incredibly exciting project and the response we have received so far has been overwhelmingly positive. The story is a place where County Durham's heritage is preserved for future generations. A place where people can not only discover more about the past, but record their own milestones, whether that be registering a birth, getting married or renewing their vows. They can also enjoy free exhibition space and cafe facilities. None of this would have been possible without the hard work of teams across the council, volunteers and our partners. And I'd like to say a big thank you to everyone who's been involved. If you haven't visited the story yet, I'd encourage you to do so and also partake in lots of the other cultural events we have happening over the summer, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does any member have any question on the report? Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair, this is a quick one, obviously I've I've had time to go up into the story, it's fantastic building, well done to everybody who's involved. And I'm only allowed to ask a question, so my question to the leader of the council would be, when is the coalition of this council going to come clean and set out a clear? Business plan and a plan on how the twenty million investment in the building on Akeley Heads is going to be curated? Given it's going to cost a taxpayer six hundred thousand pound per year.
Councillor Marshall? Can only be on the report?
It's on the report, it's really into the DLI museum up at the story.
Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair.
Can I, can I, sorry. Can I ask, is it about the story? Right.
Thanks, Chair, I'll rephrase the question just to make it clear. When are the coalition going to come clean on the business case for the new building, given that the story? Has got a full interactive display of the DLI, has had involvement from veterans over the opening event, many of whom I've spoken to. And many members of the public who are over the moon about the way that we're telling this, the proud story of the county's former regiment. So when is the coalition going to come clean on the twenty million costs and what's going to happen with the second DLI museum? And we know they like building HQs and stuff, but what's going on down here, I think is the question.
Councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, happy to answer that, and I don't think it was us who liked building HQs, but we did sell the HQ and the money that we made from that is what's developing the DLI museum. In terms of the story around the DLI museum, which is the question that you're actually asking and not the story. Is if you ever read the cabinet papers or attended any of the cabinet meetings, you'd know fully what the details are. But I'm happy to meet with you anytime and go through them again, or go through them for the first time because you obviously haven't read them.
Thank you. Councillor Wood?
Thank you, Chair, just a further question on the leader's report, given the warm comments about the the opening of the story, can the leader of the council just confirm that that thanks does extend to the previous Labour leadership of this council? Which actually planned out, set the funding and acquired the site to deliver the story which is now open, thank you.
Happy to answer that, I think if you'd listened again, it seems to be a problem to what I said, I referred to everyone involved. Now, as far as I'm concerned, everyone does involve the Labour Party, you might exclude yourself from that phrase, but I don't. So it does involve everyone, but if you were so proud of it, then perhaps your leader might have accepted the invitation to attend the opening.
There are no more questions, can I ask the council to note the report? Councillor Craig Martin?
Sorry, Chair, I might need a new handset. Chair, councillor Hopgood, the leader of the council, regarding the opening of the story, will the leader of the council open the opportunity and and provide some tours? To our new prospective general election candidates that will be getting elected very soon? And to give them a tour of our history as a county, as I know quite a few of them have just sat foot in this county in the last couple of weeks, thank you.
Councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, I'm more than happy councillor Martin to extend the invitation to those elected next week. The five new MPs for County Durham, whoever they may be, so that they can learn fully what the history of Durham is.
Thank you, councillor councillor David Hall?
Yes, councillor David Hall, Shermond Division, I'd just like to note that I think the responses from the leader have been disgusting, I think the way that she's put accusing other councillors of not reading the papers as a way of avoiding answering a question is just low as far as I'm concerned. But my question is whether the nineteen million pounds that they've got in capital from the sale of the HQ that they're using for the new building? And the six hundred thousand pounds that they're going to fund, because it's going to make that at least in a loss every year? Whether it was ever considered to use a small fraction of that money to extend the DLI exhibition at the story, thank you.
Councillor Hopgood?
I don't think the question refers to the story other than the final bit. And in terms of being able to extend it, as with most parts within the county, it's on Brownfield and you've got to extend within the the space that there is. But again, and I do take umbrage to him complaining by response, the papers are all there, everything has been open and transparent and it is there for everyone to see.
Thank you, councillor. There are no more questions, can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, we move on to item five, questions from the public. One question has been received for today's meeting from Mr Cannell, who is unable to attend this meeting, Mr Cannell requested that I put his question to the council, which is as follows. The question is being displayed on the screen. Why are disabled blue badge holders being made to pay parking charges in public car parks across the county? When the blue badge rules clearly state permitted holders have free parking where pay and display meters are in effect? And in any public stroke council run car parks disabled base? Mr Cannell will receive a written response to his questions following the meeting. We move on to item six. We have one petition for today's meeting. The petition is entitled Save Lees's Footbridge and will be presented today by Debbie Hills, who is the lead petition. Can I ask the deputy monitoring officer to explain the procedure?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members, the council received a request to present a petition from Mrs Debbie Hills, Mrs Hills will have five minutes to present her petition. Only one person may speak when presenting a petition and there is no questioning or debate, thank you, Chair.
Can I now invite Debbie to the lectern to present the petition, please?
Good morning and thank you for having me. If eight hundred folk in your community alerted a major concern through signing a petition? You would hope fellow elected councillors would listen and that's what I asked today regarding Lees's Footbridge. It's a local issue of Durham city. But there must be some point to you all gathering here today to bring your collective intellect to issues, otherwise why bother? And by the way, this isn't a minor footbridge serving a handful of residents and ramblers. This is a footbridge at the busiest point of traffic congestion in the city. With serious air quality problems erected specifically because of accidents in crossing the same road. It offers a joyful, safe passage for older and disabled people and families with children and for school pupils, to name but a few. It's a public right of way used by thousands to avoid crossing five lanes of traffic. You spend millions encouraging walking for fitness and for pleasure, yet you're prepared to knock down this vital public amenity. It came as a bolt out of the blue a year ago that Lees's Footbridge is to be demolished, consultation, no. Impact studies, none. Indeed, our parish council were asked, please, to toe the line on this one. It was shouted from the rooftops back in February that the bridge is condemned, it can't be repaired, that it's not safe to carry pedestrians. It has subsequently transpired this is nonsense. The main recommendation in your consultant's report was to look in detail at repairs. It is your officers who have decided not to look into repairs or get detailed costs. And it is your officers who have condemned the bridge, not expert opinion. The petitioners for Lees's Bridge asked simply for the council to further explore its repair. You have sadly not done this. Continuing obfuscation of an unfortunate error by your entirely reputable consultants? Who used a strength less than mild steel rather than high yield steel in their calculations? Means repairs are estimated circa two million to include re-strengthening. The alternative proposed by other structural engineers is that surface concrete repairs and resealing of bearings are required at a fraction of this cost. This may yet prove to be your post office moment of institutionalised deafness. Let's rewind the clock. Even if you continue to buy the improbable less than mild stream strength argument? That Lees's Footbridge, designed as unfit to carry pedestrians in nineteen seventy four? Would need two million to repair, we're a long way off the five million for a replacement bridge? As committed to by the parish council. Close by, a second bridge over the river and without similar health and safety considerations? Bath's Bridge is to be replaced for five million, apparently to make it wider for cyclists. We don't know for sure as there's been no consultation. However, Bath's Bridge is already considerably wider than the shared Tuchan Crossing being installed? As we speak, across five lanes of the A six ninety under Lees's Footbridge. Please listen to the eight hundred petitioners who I represent today. Get Lees's Footbridge reopened with simple concrete repairs? And then have full consultation and impact studies for both Lees's and Bath's Bridge. As requested by your consultants, get detailed repair estimates. This can avoid a large amount of public money being wasted because decisions have been made too fast? And perhaps, without pressure from yourselves, people are too obstinate to reconsider their their position. Your influence could return some of the six million, one million to demolish Lees's Footbridge? Plus five million to replace Bath's Bridge back to council coffers. It would make you look and feel good and set a good example. We live in a world where we should all make do and mend. In the meantime, planning permission is required to demolish within a conservation area. And no sign yet of a planning application, so you've got time on your hands, Debbie, thank you.
Can can I thank Debbie for attending the meeting and presenting the petition? Can I ask the council to receive the petition which will be forwarded to the appropriate services? Agreed? We move on to item seven, the report from Cabinet, can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, present the report as tabled.
Thank you, there are no questions that have been received in respect of the report, can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, we move on to item eight, Safe Durham Partnership Strategy twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine. Can I ask the head of Community Protection Service to present the report on behalf of the corporate director of neighbourhood and climate change?
Thank you, Chair, good morning councillors, this report brings the Safe Durham Partnership Strategy for the period twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine to full council for approval. Section six of the Crime and Disorder Act requires national and local agencies to act together as a community safety partnership? To formulate and implement strategies to tackle local crime and disorder. In County Durham, this duty is discharged by the Safe Durham Partnership. Legislation requires that there should be a strategy document to set out local priorities and how responsible authorities will work together. And community safety partnerships are required to provide evidence based data to support these strategic development and planning duties. This strategy forms part of the council's policy framework and is adopted by all relevant partnership partnership members individually as well as by the partnership board. And is therefore here today for the approval of full council. Ownership of the strategy rests with Safe Durham Partnership itself, which has responsibility for its delivery. And the strategy here today was approved by the partnership in May of. And the strategy here today was approved by the partnership in May of this year after extensive consultation. So members can be assured of the multi-agency support for both the approach and the resulting strategy. Development of the current strategy commenced in July twenty twenty three, with all parties agreeing that the revised strategy should focus on areas where the partnership can add most value and that it should have fewer areas of focus in order to provide clarity of purpose for the partnership, its individual partners and the community in general. The Strategy Development Group included representatives from Durham Constabulary, the Office of the Durham Police and Crime Commissioner, the Durham and Darlington Fire and Rescue Service, the Probation Service, community involuntary representatives and area action partnerships. The resulting draft high level strategy was designed to be focused and easy to understand. It outlines the priority areas for the partnership and how we work together collectively to deliver. The strategy went for consultation between March and April of this year, which included positive input from both the County Durham Youth Council and the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee alongside the public consultation. And the feedback from this consultation period and how it shaped the strategy is set out in the report between paragraphs twenty four and thirty eight for members' information. The overarching strategy outlines the Safe Durham Partnership's ambition, that Durham is a county where everyone can feel and be safe. And this is consistent with the previous Safe Durham Partnership Plan adopted in twenty twenty one. The priority themes of the strategy come under three umbrella headings of antisocial behaviour, hate crime and sexual violence. This is a sleeker and more streamlined approach to priorities than in previous Safe Durham Partnership Plans, which was broadly welcomed during the consultation, allowing for a strategy that is not only easier to digest but also focuses on tackling issues where the partnership can most effectively direct resources and funding for greatest impact. Under each of the umbrella themes, there are a number of specific goals and these are set out in paragraph forty two of the report. And for each of these umbrella themes, there is a leadership subgroup. They have been established to ensure delivery through agreed ways of working and the groups are already working on these areas of work and will report back to the Safe Durham Partnership Board regularly on their progress. To conclude, the Safe Durham Partnership Strategy twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine has been developed on a full partnership basis, informed by robust data and analysis providing an evidence base from which priorities have been developed. It has been refined and simplified from previous versions to ensure a focus on the issues where most impact can be achieved and it's been subject to extensive consultation. Once adopted, it will be published on the County Durham Partnership website. The full document is presented in appendix two of this report and the recommendation set out in paragraph eleven is for the county council to note the report and adopt the Safe Durham Partnership Strategy twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report please? Councillor Phil, have your side?
Thank you Chair, morning members. When the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee was consulted on the draft strategy in April, members referred to off-road bikes, which were a major issue in some areas, and to the reluctance some felt in reporting antisocial behaviour for fear of retaliation or lack of confidence that anything would be done. They also acknowledged the need for increased scrutiny around sexual violence and the growing issue of hate crime. The benefits of partnership model to tackle the three priorities was recognised by members, with several commenting on successful work done in their divisions as a result of partnership working, which included the community involuntary sector. I welcome the new streamlined approach to the Safe Durham Partnership Strategy, focusing on areas where the partnership can make a difference. This was echoed further during the consultation period by members of the public and the youth council, who were particularly positive about the easy to digest format. Antisocial behaviour continues to be a number one issue for concern in all local communities and I'm pleased to see that the work of the antisocial behaviour strategy and delivery plan will be reinforced and overseen by the Safe Durham Partnership. Sexual violence and violent crime have a huge impact on the lives of victims and their families and on how safe people feel in our communities. I welcome the Safe Durham Partnership's goals around increasing confidence to report such crimes and to support victims. As Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee, I intend to work closely with the partners on the Safe Durham Partnership and on these specific goals and to address the underlying contributing factors. Chair, I move the recommendations set out in the report.
Thank you, can I have a second to the report, councillor Shield?
Thank you Chair. The success of the Safe Durham Partnership Plan requires a partnership response between the statutory, voluntary organisations and residents themselves. It's very encouraging that the Safe Durham Partnership has reaffirmed its commitment to working with communities through the approach to wellbeing and recognise the impact of the wider factors such as health, housing, employment and poverty on its priority themes. As portfolio holder for equality and inclusion and member leads on poverty and welfare, I welcome the focus on hate crime. As our communities become more diverse through our humanitarian support programmes, it is important we send a message that hate crime will not be tolerated and partners are committed to promoting community cohesion. It's also respectfully noted that the youth council support this priority as an issue which impacts on many young people's lives and we can assure them that the Hate Crime Action Group will be reinvigorated and more activity will take place on the back of the Hate Hurts campaign. I duly second the recommendations set out in the report Chair.
Thank you councillor. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item nine, publication of members' addresses. Can I ask the deputy monitoring officer to present the report?
Thank you Chair. Section thirty of the Localism Act two thousand and eleven requires members to disclose any pecuniary interests to the monitoring officer as part of their register of interests. These registers must then be published by the monitoring officer. The detail of what constitutes a disclosable pecuniary interest is set out in the relevant regulations. The most important for the purposes of this report is the requirement to declare any beneficial interest in land which is within the area of the relevant authority. This invariably means that the home address of a member must be declared to and made public. The report outlines a growing body of evidence of threats, intimidation and violence, and sorry, threats of violence being received by elected officials up and down the country. This has led to both the Committee on Standards in Public Life and the Local Government Association to call on the government to legislate to remove the requirement for members to disclose their home addresses. The current legislation does allow the monitoring officer to withhold an interest from the register where it is deemed to be sensitive. To be considered sensitive, the nature of the interest must be such that the member and the monitoring officer consider the disclosure of the details of the interest could lead to the member or a person connected with the member being subject to violence or intimidation. In Durham, in the last four years, seventeen members have reported incidents of abuse, harassment or intimidation to member services. At present, twenty four councillors have interests which are deemed sensitive, fourteen of which relate to home addresses. Earlier this year, a consultation exercise was undertaken to gauge members' views on whether to continue with the existing system, to move to a blanket approach where all home addresses were considered sensitive or to move to an opt-in approach where addresses would be withheld by default but members would be able to have their addresses published on request. One hundred and nine responses were received and just over half of all respondents favoured the opt-in approach. In total, eighty percent of respondents favoured a move away from the existing system where home addresses are published by default. The comments made by members as part of the consultation exercise are detailed in the report at paragraph fifty eight. The Constitution Working Group considered the results on the tenth of May and agreed that the matter should be referred to the Standards Committee for consideration. The Standards Committee then met on the seventh of June and on considering the responses, agreed to recommend to full council that the opt-in approach be adopted. The Standards Committee were however keen to ensure that members would still be able to demonstrate a link to their local area. Therefore, they resolved that the register should reference the electoral division in which the home address is. Taking the recommended course of action is not without its risks. The council will need to be satisfied that the increase in abuse and intimidation reported by the LGA and by individual councillors of this authority to the monitoring officer is a sufficient basis to consider that the disclosure of home addresses could lead to members, co-opted members or persons connected with them being subject to violence or intimidation. If the council were to change its approach regarding the publication of addresses, it is possible that the council and or the monitoring officer herself could face legal challenge on the basis that the legislation requires sensitive interests to be considered on a case by case basis. However, the monitoring officer considers that the evidence presented by the LGA, the individual cases reported locally and a recent request from the Secretary of State to treat requests that interests be considered sensitively could be used to defend the treatment of all members' home addresses being considered sensitive. The report sets out that other councils have made similar changes as proposed and have not faced legal challenge and members might therefore consider that the risk of challenge to this course of action will be low. Members should note that the proposal only applies to members' home addresses and any other interests in land that a member may have would continue to be published in the usual way unless deemed sensitive on a case by case basis. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph eight.
Thank you, can I have a mover, councillor Hopgood?
Thank you Chair. I'm grateful to the monitoring officer and her team for consulting members on this important issue. The high proportion of responses received to the consultation demonstrates the strength of feeling and concern that members have regarding the abuse and intimidation experienced by local councillors. The LGA's research indicates that sadly, the number of incidents of abuse experienced by local councillors is increasing. In responding to the consultation, many of our members referred to their own experiences. Following publication of the LGA research, the Minister for Local Government wrote to councils to ensure that all members are aware of the ability to request that an interest be treated as sensitive and to request that all such requests be treated sympathetically. The monitoring officer has and does treat all such requests sympathetically and will proactively recommend that interests are treated as sensitive in response to particular incidents. In light of the increasing number of calls for changes in legislation, the findings of the LGA research and the views of county councillors, the proposal in this report is proportionate. The Standards Committee made the helpful recommendation that the division in which a member lives is recorded on the form instead of the home address. Members who still wish to have their home address published can opt to do so. I therefore move the recommendations Chair.
Thank you councillor. And can I have a second, councillor Rob Crute?
Second the recommendation Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Danny Woods?
Thanks Chair, it's just a point of clarification in terms of the process really. Could we have just some clarification from James that we don't all have to declare an interest on it? If it's about all of our home addresses. So I just thought for the purpose of a member of the public reading through the minutes, as a couple of them might do, I think it'd be helpful to have that advice in.
Yes, I can give that clarification, the members do not have a disclosable interest in the contents of this report.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Sorry. Sorry. Councillor Tinsley had come in just as-
Thank you Chair, it was just clarification on timescales, will this come in with the new council or is this something that will come in earlier before the next local elections?
Yes, yes Chair, so to councillor Tinsley's point, this will come in before the elections in twenty twenty five. It'll come in as soon as possible, there'll be a body of work for member services to do in terms of updating registers in any event and seeking members' views on being opted in and doing cross-reference checks on individual addresses to electoral division. So it will come in as soon as practicable.
As we've agreed the recommendations, the question hasn't made any difference for anyone? No, thank you. Item ten, the annual report on the Standards Committee. Can I invite the Chair of the Standards Committee, councillor Catherine Rooney, to present her report?
Thank you Chair, I'm pleased to present the annual report of the Standards Committee for the period twenty twenty three to twenty four. The report sets out the membership of the committee and includes three new independent persons who were appointed by the committee in June twenty twenty three. I'm also pleased to confirm that Alan Fletcher, our existing independent person, agreed to extend his term for a further two years until September twenty twenty five. We are fortunate to have four independent members to support the monitoring officer and the committee with member code of conduct issues. All of them have received induction training and had the opportunity to attend external training in relation to their role. The committee's work programme, which is consistent with the terms of reference set out in the report at paragraph thirteen, is attached in appendix two to the report. The committee has continued to monitor standards and governance issues nationally. Since the council signed the Local Government Association's Debate Not Hate Statement in January twenty twenty three, the committee has kept up to date with developments in relation to the Debate Not Hate Campaign. It is reassuring that the county council already reflects the majority of best practice recommendations in relation to its arrangements for supporting councillors who experience abuse. Some of those arrangements have been used by the LGA as case studies to demonstrate best practice. The committee is overseeing the development of zero tolerance approach to abuse policy, which will be shared with members and presented to a future meeting at the council during the coming year. In respect of complaints, members will see from the report that there were fewer complaints received in twenty twenty three to twenty four when compared with the previous year. There was also a decrease in number of complaints where local resolution was recommended and a similar trend was observed in relation to complaints where no further action was recommended. However, the number of complaints referred for investigation was higher than last year. The report also includes a breakdown of the costs to the council dealing with a member code of conduct matter. The report also sets out the training that has been provided to the independent persons and elected members. Looking ahead, the committee has agreed a work programme for twenty twenty four to twenty five, which includes the usual standard agenda items, the zero tolerance to abuse policy, which I previously mentioned in a review of the procedure for members' code of conduct complaints. The work programme will continue to be a living document which can be updated to reflect any developments within the committee's remit throughout the year. Finally, I would like to thank the monitoring officer and her team for their continued work with the committee in assistance to ensure a high standard are achieved by all local elected members. I ask the council to note the report.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Does any member wish to speak on the report? I have councillor Bahari.
Thank you Chair, just on the internal costs incurred on page ninety seven of the report, I think there might be a typo on the cost. It currently states that four million four hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety two pound was spent on town and parish councillor complaints. Now, I know some town and parish councillors in my patch have been in front of standards a fair few times, but I think that's a bit excessive.
Yes Chair, as councillor Bahari points out, that should be a full stop rather than a comma. So yeah, we'll make sure that's made clear in the minute, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. We move on to item eleven, questions from members. There are no questions submitted for today's meeting. That concludes today's business for the council meeting. I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and press and media who have watched this meeting, thank you.